Good.
Yep.
Good evening and welcome to our annual reorg meeting of April 3rd, 2023. I need a motion to begin the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Just for the record, everybody take note. Trustee Carl and trustee Barringer are not in the meeting and will be abstaining from the meeting. All right, first order of business on the reorg is, let me just read through the annual organizational meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, Orange County, New York, is being held this evening at 7:00 PM in the boardroom in the Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, on today, April 3rd, 2023. At this time, I'm going to ask that we all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business is the monthly meeting schedule for the 23-24 year. Has the board all had a chance to look through it?
Yes.
Okay. April 4th and 18th, May 2nd and 16th, June 6th and 20th, July 18th, August 15th, September 5th and 19th, October 3rd and 17th, excuse me, November 7th and 21th, December 5th and 19th, January 2nd and 16th, February 6th and 20th, March 5th and 18th. The organizational meeting will take place next year on April 1st, and the April meeting is the 2nd and the 16th. I need a motion to accept the meeting agenda calendars as submitted.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried, thank you. Next order of business is the meetings will begin at 7:00 PM unless otherwise specifically posted by the clerk. I need a motion to make that 7 o'clock PM standard.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor, will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Next order of business, rules of procedure, resolve the Board of Trustees how conduct itself according to the Robert's Rules of Orders to the extent that Robert Rules of Orders are consistent with village law of the state of New York. I need a motion to accept the Robert's Rules of Orders in our procedure.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Next order of business, employee compensation, resolve that the compensation for the fiscal year 23 to 2024 for village employees shall be paid biweekly with the payroll period ending on Wednesday and checks being dispersed on the following Thursday. I need a motion.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Next order of business, official newspaper, resolve the official newspaper of the village board shall be the Middletown Times-Herald Record. Be further resolved that the alternative newspaper for the village board shall be the Photo News for such matters that do not require legal notice. I need a motion.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Next order of business, the official depositories, resolve the official depository of the village board shall be the Webster Bank, 591 Route 17M, Monroe, New York, 10950. I need a motion.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Next order of business, the independent auditor designation, resolve that RBT CPA LLP of 11 Racket Road, Newburgh, New York, 12550, is hereby designated as the independent auditor for the Village of Monroe's fiscal year June 1, 2023 to May 31, 2024, in the amount not to exceed $25,000. I need a motion to appoint RBT for the fiscal year of June 1, 23 to May 31 of 24 as our orders.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried, thank you. Next order of business, the board appointments by the mayor. The following appointments are made by Mayor Dwyer. Mayor Dwyer is appointed to liaison for the Highway Department. Mayor Dwyer is, no, excuse me, trustee Ferraro, I don't have, I'm looking at the wrong one, sorry. I apologize. No, that's, is that right? Yeah, that's it, okay, thank, we're good. Okay, so Mayor Dwyer, let me repeat that, is appointed liaison for the Highway Department. Mayor Dwyer is appointed liaison to the village historian. Trustee Ferraro is appointed to liaison to the building maintenance of Village Hall. Trustee Ferraro is appointed as, to act as deputy mayor effective June 1, excuse me, April 1, effective...
Until April 1st of 2024.
Yeah.
One year.
Okay. So effective today.
Right.
To April 1 of 2024. Trustee Ferraro is appointed liaison for the Monroe Joint and Park Recreation Committee. Trustee Ferraro is appointed liaison for Crane Park and all village events, and trusted Ferraro is appointed liaison for all village technology. Trustee Barringer is appointed to liaison to the Police Department. Trustee Barringer is appointed to liaison for the Greater Monroe Chamber of Commerce. Trustee Barringer is appointed liaison for the Monroe Ambulance Corps. Trustee O'Connor is appointed liaison for the Building and Justice Court. Trustee O'Connor is appointed liaison for the Treasurer. Trustee O'Connor is appointed liaison for the village clerk, excuse me, Clerk's Office, and trustee O'Connor is appointed to liaison for the village insurance. Trustee Carl is appointed liaison to the Water Department. Trustee Carl is appointed liaison to Orange County Sewer District Number 1, and trustee Carl is appointed liaison for street lighting, and trustee Carl is appointed liaison for the Monroe Joint via district. I need a motion to accept those appointments as recommended by the board, by the mayor.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Staff appointments, resolve that Anthony Feliz is hereby appointed village treasurer as a per-job description on file in the village clerk's office for a period of one year from 4/1/23 to 3/31/24. I need a motion, well, you know what, let me go through them all.
Yeah.
Second one, resolve that Aileen Ryan is hereby appointed deputy... Can I do those separately? Let me do them separately, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, to the public. Anthony Feliz is hereby appointed village treasurer as per-job description on file in the village clerk's office for a period of one year, 4/1/23 to 3/31/24. I need a motion.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Next order, resolve that Aileen Ryan is hereby appointed deputy village clerk as per-job description on file in the village clerk's office for a period of one year, 4/1/23 to 3/31/24, and renewable on annual basis. I need a motion to accept that.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Next order, acting village justice, resolve that pursuant to Section 3-302 of village law, that Yvette Rosario is hereby appointed to serve as village justice for the Village of Monroe for the fiscal year of, excuse me, for the 2023-2024 term, and until such time as further appointment or reappointment is made. Isn't there a term?
There isn't, it takes a bit, it's guys every year.
Okay, so she would... So should we put down, would it end in March of 24?
Well, next year, there's an option next year, so if the judge picks someone else, I guess we can pick someone else. Oh, it ends 23, say 23, it's just 23, 24.
So does it end December 31st, 23?
No, it ends the, our year, April.
So 3/31 of 24. So I think we should just modify that. So let's call it 4/3/23 to 3/31/24, okay?
4/1, right, 4/1/23?
Yeah. All right, I need a motion, please.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Licensing authority, resolve that pursuant to Village Code, Chapter 15115, bingo and games of chance permitting, bingo games of chance pursuant to general municipal law authorizing the Board of Trustees, delegate an officer of the village authority in relation to issuance of a license amendment or cancellation of licenses to conduct investigations and hearings and supervision of the operation of the games. The village clerk is hereby designated to exercise such authority. I need a motion to resolve the licensing authority.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. All right, next order of business, resolve that Jeff Pouchier is hereby appointed chairman of the planning board for a period of one year, ending March 31, 2024. I need a motion.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Resolve that Paul Baum is hereby appointed chairperson of the zoning board of appeals for a period of one year, ending March 31 of 2024. I need a motion.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. And a motion, let's see, crossing guards, crossing guards, cross, school crossing guards, Anita Zellinoi of North Main, former North Main Street School, and Eileen Lynch of Pine Tree. I need a motion to appoint them for another year.
O'Connor, yep, go ahead.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. The village historian is to be determined, so there'll be no appointment at this time. Next appointment is the board, resolve the extension of the contractual position of village attorney held by Elise Terhun of Two Patterson Hill Tuxedo, New York, 10987, as per job description outlined in the agreement on file with the village clerk as per fee schedule provided. I need a motion.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Next order of business, the Board of Trustees designates the following law firms to serve as alternate village attorneys with regard to specific matters in accordance with the fee schedule listed in the current retainer agreement for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. So Elizabeth Cassidy, Seven Grand Street, Warwick, New York, and Burke, Mealy, and Golden, which is actually not, it's actually, it is Norton... and Torrey. Okay? So that's out. All right? And, okay, so I need a motion to accept these alternate councils for specific work in the village.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Resolve the Board of Trustees designate Kelly Norton of Norton and Torrey, you make that change?
Yeah.
Okay. To the contractual position of ZBA or Zoning Board of Appeals Attorney for per-job description on file with the village clerk for fiscal year 23-24. I need a motion to accept this appointment.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Resolve the Board of Trustees designate law firm Elizabeth Cassidy, PLLC, of Seven Grand Street, Warwick, New York, to the contractual position of planning board attorney as per job description on file with the village clerk for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. I need a motion to accept this.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Resolve the board designate the following law firm, Remetta Remetta of 30 Matthew Street, Suite 104, Goshen, New York, as a special prosecutor for all aspects of vehicle and traffic prosecutions in the village court for the fiscal year 23-24. I need a motion.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Resolve the Board of Trustees designate Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood, One Chase, Manhattan Plaza, New York, New York, to represent the Village of Monroe as bond counsel for matters requiring bonding for services for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. I need a motion.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Resolve the Board of Trustees designate the law firm of Thomas, Drohan, Waxman, Pettigrew, and Mailey, LLP of 2517 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, 12533, to the contractual position of labor and employment counsel for fiscal year 23-24. I need a motion.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Resolve the Board of Trustees designate Munistat Services of 12 Roosevelt Avenue, Port Jervis Station, New York, 11776, as financial advisor of record for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. I need a motion to accept.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Next order is the resolution to the board designate Langton Tully of PO Box 687, Goshen, New York, to serve as the village engineer on a contractual basis for the fiscal year of 2023 to 2024. I need a motion.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Further, resolve the Board of Trustees designate Theodore Fink, AICP, Principal of Green Plan Inc. of 302 Pels Road, Reinbeck, New York, to the contractual position of planner for the Board of Trustees and the planning board per-job description on file with the village clerk for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. I need a motion.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Next order of business, mileage reimbursement allowance, whereas the village board of trustees determines to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to officers and employees of the village who use their personal automobile while performing their official duties on behalf of the village. Now therefore be resolved that Section 1, that the village board shall approve reimbursement to such officers and employees at the rate of 65 and one-half cents per mile per 2023 IRS schedule, and Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect immediately. I need a motion to accept this reimbursement allowance.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
I'm sorry, was that, you're okay? Okay. Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs, okay. Next order of business, fireworks display permit, designate, resolve upon approval of the village board, the village clerk is appointed, permit authority for issuance of permits for the public display of fireworks under and pursuant to the conditions and restrictions set forth in Penal Law Section 189-2, but such permit shall be issued only after, only after application shall have been filed together with an insurance policy in the amount of $1 million, naming the Village of Monroe as additional insured on the certificate. Village has the right to refuse any insurance company that is not A or above and licensed in the state of New York. Is it 1 million?
Doesn't seem to be high enough anymore.
No. For some reason, I thought they actually issue like a, like 10 million, for some reason, I don't know why I think that. All right, we'll leave it at that, you'll confirm? Okay? Because that, historically, they have to furnish it, okay? Yeah. Okay, I need a motion.
Ferraro, make the motion.
Second? Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs. Further attendance at schools and conferences, whereas theirs to be held during the coming fiscal year, the annual meeting conducted by the New York State Conference of Mayors and other municipal officials, for municipal officials in NICOM's Main Street Meeting, including webinar, seminars, and classes, and B, the Training School for Fiscal Officers and Municipal Clerks, conducted by the New York State Conference of Mayors and other municipal officials, C, the following county association meetings, the Orange County Clerks Association, Orange County Association of Towns and Villages, Detroit County Chapter, New York State Building Officials Conference, Hudson Valley Waterworks Associates, and Safe Roads Programs, and D, planning and zoning seminars, Police Department Seminars, and training schools in parks and recreation schools. Whereas it is determined by the Board of Trustees that attendance by certain municipal officials and employees at one or more of these meetings, conferences, and schools benefits the municipality. Now therefore be resolved that Section 1, that upon the, that the following officers and employees are hereby authorized to attend the schools above mentioned upon approval of the Board of Trustees at least 30 days prior to registration. Mayor and trustees, village clerk, deputy clerk, treasurer, building inspector, assistant building inspector, water plant operator, DPW supervisor, planning board members, zoning board members, police department personnel, planning board secretary, village attorney, and all union and non-union personnel. And two, that the resolution shall take effect immediately. I just want to just clarify, it says building inspector, assistant building inspector, I think it should include, if you could add this, code enforcement... and fire inspector personnel, okay? Thank you.
Could you change the supervisor to the working leader?
Yes. And I think the same thing on the water plant. He's a working leader.
Uh, he's a water plant operator.
Is he, oh, is he? Oh, okay, right. I thought he was, I thought we changed him in the union. Okay. Okay, so I need a motion.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs. Payment authorization for certain recurring expenses, resolve pursuant to Section 5-5246 of the village law, the Board of Trustees does hereby authorize the treasurer to make payments in advance awarded on claims for recurring expenses for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, advertising, the Times-Herald Record, and workers' compensation, tail claims. I need a motion.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Holiday schedule for the 2023-2024, in 2023, we have Memorial Day, Monday, May 29, Independence Day, Tuesday, July 4, Labor Day, Monday, September 4, Columbus Day, Monday, October 9, Veterans Day, Friday, November 10, half-day Thanksgiving Eve, Wednesday, that's November 22, Thanksgiving, Thursday and Friday, November 23 and 24, 2023, half-day Christmas Eve, Friday, December 22, and Christmas holiday, Monday, December 25. In 2024, we have New Year's holiday, which is only the Monday on January 1, Martin Luther King, Monday, January 15, Lincoln's Birthday, Friday, February 9, and President's Day, Monday, February 19. I need a motion.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs. Procurement policy, and a motion by trustee, seconded by trustee, and carried a bit, a bit, a bit, okay? Purchase contract is limited to $20,000, and public works on contracts is limited to $35,000. Estimated amount of purchase contracts requires three written fact quotations for an RFP of $3,000 to $20,000. Estimated amount of public works contracts, $5,000 to $35,000. Is that a second page in it?
No.
Really? Okay. I thought there was a second page, I don't know why I think that, but okay. All right, so I need a motion to accept the procurement policy as listed in the village policies.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Organizational meetings of 2024, the next scheduled organizational meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 1, 2024, at 7:00 PM. I need a motion to accept that.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Okay, next order of business is the adjournment of the organizational meeting. There is one thing, did you get Dan Margada, did you get Paul Baum's recommendation?
It's in the meeting.
It's in the meeting, okay, all right. So let me just take a moment here, just want to see here, that's good, 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 okay? Good, 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 good.
Okay, cross it out, I got it.
I'm sorry?
Cross it out on the bottom.
Sure. Okay. 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 And, okay, so she, Elizabeth, okay, got it. John Gilstrap, okay, Jim, okay, okay. I'm missing one person there. I'm sorry? Yep. Okay. Okay. We do need two members to be added to the Monroe Joint Park and Recreation Commission. Well, I have three, I have Uba, Erica, and Robert Bobby. So we need two more. Anybody from the public, anybody in the audience tonight that would like to consider it, it's a worthwhile, very important part. Oh, there's the procurement policy, that's...
Yeah, there's the policies in the back.
Okay, very good. Okay, anything further on that, anybody could reach out to us and we can... All right. Okay, I need a motion to close the reorganizational meeting of April 3, 2023.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. I'm sorry, who made the first?
I did.
You did, I second. Okay, second, okay. Okay, that takes care of that. Why don't we go right into the meeting? Can we do that? I think we can do that. Let's keep it going. Okay, so, call the order pledge, okay, let's just do a roll call real quick. Trustee Barringer is absent. Trustee Ferraro?
Present.
Trustee Carl is absent. Trustee O'Connor?
Present.
And Mayor Dwyer. Okay? Okay, next order of business, the approval of the board minutes as submitted for the March 21 meeting from the clerk, I need a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. Next order of business is the appointment of Anthony Feliz as village treasurer. I need a motion to appoint Anthony.
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
YRIs so carried. And just for the public, everybody here tonight, just so you're aware, the Anthony Feliz is our new treasurer. He applied for the position, we had one other person that did apply, but had some time constraints, so we, we accepted Anthony's application and his qualifications. He field-checked off all the boxes for us, so we were looking for a long and happy relationship with Anthony, so welcome aboard, Anthony. Okay, so we did that, we voted on, okay, next order of business is a, is a little housekeeping. We had a gentleman who was on our park commission, Kevin Metcalf, he decided that he had too much on his plate, and we understand that, everybody has too much on their plate. So we'll take with regret his resignation, I just need the board to approve that, so I need a motion to approve Kevin Metcalf's...
Ferraro, make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
And I will third, so... Call the question. Call the question?
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
I, so three oh. He was on the Monroe Joint Park Recreation Committee as a, as a commissioner member. Third order of business, the reappointment of Dan Margada to our zoning board of appeals as a full member. I need a motion to accept our chairman, Paul Baum's recommendation.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question?
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
Dwyer, I. Next order of business is the amendment to the Village of Monroe Summer Carnival. So as the board has been discussing this, and moving forward, they came to us with an opportunity to have a second weekend here, but the second weekend would only be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, not Thursday.
I thought the first one was?
Thursday.
I thought the first one was three days.
No.
Yeah. That's what you said.
Did I say that? Just now?
The first one was the twenty-first, twenty-second?
Yeah, 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 that's, that's the earlier one. That's the one that they're actually giving up to us.
That's the three-dayer.
That's the three-day, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And then the following week is our normal week.
Right.
Normal four-day event.
Okay.
Okay? So what are the dates then again?
So the, the first one, the added one, is July twenty-first to July twenty-third, so it's Friday through Sunday.
Right.
And then the, our normal one will be start on Thursday, July twenty-seventh, through Sunday, July thirtieth, with the actual times to be posted later.
Okay, cool. Okay, good. So this amendment, and, and just for the public and everybody here tonight, just for everybody's knowledge, we have an agreement with Ace Amusement, and as a result of that agreement, we're going to utilize it for the purposes of getting the additional costs of the games of chance, which we receive in our contract, one hundred dollars per game, per day.
Day.
And then secondly, the police coverage that was required, they'll be paying that prorated over three days, so whatever it costs over four days, which I think is like forty-five hundred dollars, it'll now be three days of that, so they'll be paying that additionally. And they'll be supplying the porta-potties and the garbage. That's on them for this first weekend as well. So that's an amendment to our original agreement, I think, Kim, right?
Yes.
So I, I need to take a motion to allow the amendment allowing the first three-day event in addition with all the same regulations, so.
Ferraro make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
Dwyer, I so carried. Thank you. Next order of business is set the public hearing fiscal year twenty-two-four. We've picked April eighteenth?
April eighteenth, at seven PM.
Right. So April eighteenth at seven PM, we'll, we'll start the meeting off with a public hearing on our budget, proposed budget. So I need a motion?
O'Connor will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call the question?
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
Dwyer, I. Next order of business, request to travel, New York State Chief Police, Chiefs of Police Association Annual Conference for trustee, excuse me, for, well, she's not here, what am I saying? For Chief Guzman. So I'll have trustee Ferraro read that.
Okay. Resolve the board of trustees approves the attendance of Chief Guzman for the New York State Chiefs of Police Annual Conferences that will be held July sixteenth, twenty-two-three, to July nineteenth, twenty-two-three, in Albany, New York. Conference registration is three hundred and twenty-five dollars and three nights of accommodations at the Crown Plaza Albany Desmond Hotel at four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, for a total of eight hundred and two dollars. These expenses will be charged to budget line A three-one-two-zero dot four-seven-two education, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
And O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
Dwyer, I so carried. Thank you. Okay. All right. Next order of business is the parking kiosk processing rates. So there's a couple of things, this is discussion, obviously, that I want to take up with the board. So we never really came down to a parking rate. It was recommended, I think right now, you put a quarter in, I think you get?
An hour.
An hour.
Yeah.
You put two quarters in, you get two hours, something like that.
That's max.
Right. So, and I think that max time, I think, should still be, I think it, you know, up to two hours should still be the thing, but I think we did talk to the gentleman, what was his name again? Darrell.
Darrell.
Darrell Vulgarino. And he said you could have a second one-hour window. So if, let's say, you know, one of the hair salons, or somebody's having, typically in the retail section, you're never going to be here more than two hours, right? And we don't, we want to encourage movement of traffic because it's such a premium. So, but if somebody comes in to get a hair done, and, and it's a process, and it's more than two hours, and that's not unheard of, right? So you need to have that second window of one hour that can be done remotely from a smartphone. But now we talk about the rates. So what do we see as the rates?
Well, usually fifty cents an hour for the first two hours, you know, each, each of those hours should be fifty cents. And that third one, that is through the phone, that's a, you know, that's a premium, I think, because now it's, you're tying up a spot for an additional hour in our very limited downtown area. So that one might be, you know, maybe a dollar for that third hour.
Okay.
At least that's what I think.
Yeah, I see.
Okay. Now, there was a firm that the clerk had spoken with, a gentleman named Mark Shapiro from National, excuse me, from Heartland Payment Systems, and I was a little, I'm not really sure I understand it, frankly. He, if you use a credit card, he wants to charge you a quarter. Am I, am I reading that correctly?
That's the way I see it.
Yeah.
Well, that's the, he, he, per transaction.
Yeah.
So in other words, we, we would get the fifty cents, he would get that quarter.
On top of that.
On top of that. It's a transaction fee, if I'm reading this correct.
Yeah, no, I think, that's why I'm seeing it. That's exactly how I'm seeing it. Does that seem like legitimate, like twenty-five cents?
Well, it, it, it's a lot of money.
To pay.
To pay. Because it's normally when you do a, a, a credit card transaction, it's three percent, or, or American Express might be five percent.
Right.
So five percent of a dollar, you know, is not quite.
Nickel.
Yeah.
So I, I, I was wondering if maybe, I'm not really committed to this. What I was more interested in is really getting the board's feeling about the rate to park. That's what I'm more interested in, because that's what's going to come up next. You know, this here certainly, but I think we need to go back to Webster, whoever our clearing is, you have a clearer that you use for your credit cards? Is it the bank?
Value payments.
Value payments. I think we need to go to them and say, what would you charge us? Because I'm always on the impression it's two, three percent.
Yeah.
So this here is a quarter.
What, what do other municipalities use that have these? Do you guys, I've never, I've never, it's not a parking kiosk, we had it once.
The only one I've ever used.
Yeah, in the city, and, yeah. And you pay it because you need to.
Right.
Right.
And nobody knows that machine.
I'm curious.
Yeah, I don't know either. I, I don't really know much about it.
I don't remember.
Yeah.
I just know that, you know, if we're charging fifty cents for an hour, say, say somebody puts down fifty cents, they're going to pay fifty percent of that additionally just to park there.
Right.
It almost seems like we're hitting them in the head. And I, yeah, I just think we need to look at that.
Yeah.
You know? So, but we do, do we like fifty cents per hour? And then a dollar on the return?
Well, I think that's fair. I think that's fair. E, either that or reduce it to, I don't know if we want to get this complicated, twenty, go to, if they want to keep twenty-five cents, but give them, allow them a thirty-minute, so an option. So in other words, the first quarter in is only, comes up to thirty minutes, so people who's really just running in and out. I don't know if we want to get that flexible. I don't know if it can do that much.
So you're asking thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes for the first quarter.
I don't know. I don't, I don't know how, yeah. So, so it'd be twenty-five cents for thirty minutes, and then it's a fifty cent per hour, two-hour max.
Yeah. And it's, it's the same amount, when you think about it.
Yeah, no, it is.
Or, you know, because a lot of people, if you throw the quarter in and you get the hour, and you only use fifteen minutes, the next person in will just use that timeout. They won't add another.
Right.
Sorry.
Okay. So for the purposes tonight, I think we just want to establish, we've got some rates here.
Yeah.
So that's really what was important to me. I think we need to look, if you could reach out to Tom Nash or whomever tomorrow, and...
I know that, well, I know Catholic used to have somebody at value payments. I don't know if perhaps.
Well, we'd like to talk to them.
Yeah, I think they have someone, I don't know, I'm not sure that Webster Bank is who does about value payments.
I know. Oh, is that right?
I'm not sure.
All right. So you need to look into that, all right? And then circle back with us on it? Okay. Next order of business is Webster Bank, the signature authorization. Donner is the signator, the mayor is the signator, and now we're going to put Anthony on as a signator, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, that's what it says.
Okay. Yeah, should be looking at that, not this here. Here, you want to do that?
Yeah, I'll read. Resolve the board of trustees authorize the change of signature and maintenance of online banking on the Webster Bank account numbers, adding Anthony Feliz, village treasurer immediately. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Ferraro, I.
O'Connor, I.
Okay. Next order of business, okay. So this business with the grant writer, just for the public to know, we were part of a consortium, the town of Monroe had acquired a, a grant writing firm, Millennium, and they were providing a service, it was a flat number of thirty-six thousand. The town took on the fifty percent burden of that thirty-six for eighteen, and then the nine and nine were split between the Village of Monroe and the Village of Harriman.